All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Toomah County Planning Commission meeting of May 3, 2017, to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Aye. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Looks like we have a good turnout today. If anyone needs an agenda, we do have some in the back. And if there is not enough, please let us know and we'll get some more. We're going to start with some reports from commissioners and staff. Anything from commissioners?
I'd like to report that we kicked off the marijuana, the Adult Use Marijuana Act. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Not that anybody's ever complained about not being able to hear. The, what are we calling it? The working group, right? Started a couple of weeks ago. We had our first meeting. It went on for quite a while. We, of course, ran out of time. And at this point, we are understanding the situation. So I think the whole meeting was about getting the landscape. So we aren't in a position of actually dealing with anything. The one thing that probably is of note for the board, the commission to understand is that it looks to me like the priorities are around melding the medical marijuana use regulations and the Adult Use Marijuana Act things to each other so they're not so disconnected as they are right now, which has a lot of connections to what the state's doing, and it gets very complicated. But the commercial side of it was given a second priority. We won't be getting to that for a while.
Do you have a next meeting?
Yeah, the next meeting's going to happen when I'm not here. But then it's-
It'll go a lot faster.
It'll go a lot faster. And it is once a month, and so we'll be meeting once a month from here on out. Would you think that, is that an accurate synopsis? Or can you help me out there, Dave?
I'll leave it at that. I would agree with you.
All right.
And they're moving forward. The next meeting, just people's information, will be postponed due to people not being able to-
Oh, really?
So that's going to go out, I think, tomorrow or the next day.
Oh, okay.
We want to make sure that the committee's able to be there and we have good representation. So unfortunately, we're going to go ahead and cancel that one to make sure everybody's there.
Thanks.
Any other commissioners? Then we'll move on to the report from the Board of Supervisors. Planning Committee representative.
No meeting was held.
Thank you. A report from the Agricultural Advisory Committee representative.
No meeting held.
Thank you. Now we'll move to make any comments, or we'll make a motion on the minutes of the meeting of April 5, 2017. Anyone want to make a comment or motion?
I move that we approve it as published.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Do you want to do any reports from staff? I skipped you.
If there's anything that the commission wants to hear about projects from CRA, I'd be happy to do so. Otherwise, I'll let us proceed with the agenda items.
My only question is whether we're planning a meeting on the 19th or the 17th.
I believe we are. Yeah, I believe we are.
Just for planning purposes. Thank you.
Yes. Anybody else want to, any updates from CRA in any way? Then I'll just proceed with the agenda items.
Okay. Thank you. So now we will open it up to public comment, and that is any public comment that is not on the agenda.
Well, just because you're the Planning Commission, I would like to point out that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And we do have at least one group home for the mentally ill in our county. It's in Jamestown. And I know there have been some proposals for some other group homes that suffered from the, can you hear me? You're looking at me funny.
Not very well.
Okay. We have one group home in Jamestown for the mentally ill. I know there was a proposal at one time in the city of Sonora that the NIMBYs came out for. And then several people that need group home living are housed at our expense outside of the county. So I would encourage you, since this is Mental Health Awareness Month, to take advantage and perhaps increasing your knowledge of the mentally ill members of our community. So up in Groveland now, they do have a group that's meeting at Little House. So they do have some mental health stuff there. And then there's going to be an open house down at the enrichment center coming up. I don't remember the date off the top of my hand, but this is a housing need in our community, and I would just ask you to maybe get a little more awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments? With that, I will close. Public comment. And we will move on to the agenda item. Why don't we have staff do a report?
My name is David Gonzalez. I'm your Community Resource Agency Director. For those of you in the audience that don't know me, I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting. I want to introduce one of our planners, Dan Fennessen. He has been on board since before I started. I started in January. Dan has been here since last fall. As you know, the planners are starting to come before the Planning Commission, presenting their items as it should be. And this is Dan's first trip here, and I just want to make sure that you know that he's one of our best planners in learning. But be nice to him. This is his first show here. I'm here to protect him and watch for him. I'm kidding. Anyway, just wanted to introduce you. You get to see him more often now. This is his first time up to the show, so anyway.
Our behavior doesn't have to extend to you now, does it?
No, you don't. You can abuse me all you want.
So I think we'll start with Dan. Correct?
Good evening. My name's Dan Fennessen, and I'm the lead project planner on site development permit 16-005 to construct a satellite dialysis facility. As you're aware, CRA, the Community Resources Agency, we are always keeping in mind our vision, mission, and values throughout any land development application that we receive. I'm not going to go over each of these in depth because I know you've already heard it for the past presentations, but I will have a slide at the end showing how we meet the mission with this site development permit. Site development permit SDP 16-005 is to allow the construction of an 8,246-square-foot satellite dialysis facility on a 1.71-acre site consisting of accessor partial numbers 3-370-21 and 3-370-04. The project site is Zone C1D, general commercial design review combining and O, open space. The project is located on the west side of State Highway 108, approximately 280 feet south of the intersection of State Highway 108 and Rawhide Road in Jamestown. The general plan designation for the site is general commercial. This is the map of the proposed site. As you can see here, to the north is Sierra Gas Station, and to the south is the Dollar General. And this little sliver here is the Deo Espresso. The design of the building, the building will consist of hardy plank, lapsed, painted light gray with light beige trim. Onings are proposed on the northwest and east elevations, which will be painted green, and the roof will consist of a parapet roof with wood corbels. HVAC units will be located on the roof and screened by the parapet. As you can see here, this is our little palette, our color palette. I wanted to point out that the shades, the proposed colors, will differ depending on the setters of the projector. But if you're interested, I do have the original palette with me. Here's a little visualization of the design. You can see here, this is the north elevation. Highway 108 is running along this side with Woods Creek on this side. This is the east elevation. I apologize about the poor graphic on this. I don't know what happened with that. But Highway 108 is running along this side with the Dollar General back here and Woods Creek in the back here. Project notices were sent to 26 adjoining property owners. Two parties were opposed to the project. One was, only one was adjoining property. The other was the Toomah County Heritage Committee. And I did not include that in the packet, but we do have copies if you'd like to see their comments.
Can we also see the color palette, too?
The first concern was regarding the location of the proposed project. The project is located on site Zone C1D, which allows retail services such as the proposed dialysis facility as a permitted use. So the project is consistent with our zoning. Concerns regarding design, originally, the design had a stone veneer in it. However, upon recommendation from the Heritage Committee, we, the architect, has changed that and implemented revised plans to implement the design standards from the Jamestown Design We believe that this project meets the mission. Our first objective, to create a healthy and safe environment. The site development permit would allow healthy, health and safety of the community through the addition of a health service in the county. Our second mission, to exercise natural, cultural, and financial resource stewardship. Natural stewardship has been made on the site through the dedication of open space zoning along Woods Creek. Cultural stewardship through design consistent with the Jamestown Design Guidelines. And financial stewardship through the creation of jobs in Toomah County. Third mission, to promote economic prosperity. Approval of site development permit 16-005 would promote development and create jobs in the county. And the last mission, to enhance quality of life. The development permit diversifies the type of medical treatment available in Toomah County and enables treatment for those in need in our county. So the decision process, the Toomah County Planning Commission may either approve the project with conditions, approve the project with modifications, or deny the project. Are there any questions?
I'm glad you passed this color palette around because on page 29, it's pink. We don't need a pink building in Jamestown.
Don't want one either.
So I don't know what happened between the pink on that page and this, but this is fine.
Can you translate back this way?
Certainly, certainly.
My other, I have another question, though.
Dick, you really need to get a little more in touch with your feminine side.
Yeah, I guess. In the package, I noticed it requires 49 parking spaces. And I guess, yeah, that's based on six per thousand feet or something like that under the ordinance code. But just to make an editorial comment, 49 parking spaces for a kidney dialysis center? How many folks are you going to have in there at one time? This is not a fast food restaurant. It's a dialysis center, and it seems to me 49, which requires additional paving and all that sort of thing. Why are we doing that, other than the fact that the ordinance doesn't differentiate between uses, I guess? Is that correct?
So those are general commercial requirements. And one of the things we're going to be working on through the general plan and the changes that we're working on in the organization through Community Resource Agency is to provide some latitude just for the instances that you're talking about. But in order for these projects at the present time to meet the requirements, to present to you a project that meets those, we have to do that. And sometimes it's painful even for us to say, here's what you got to do. But we also have to operate within the means and the ordinances that we have. So we're going to work on something like that. There may be some latitude. We'll look at that. And I will tell you that I've seen a lot of these go in, and those parking lots are never full, ever.
It can be.
People come in, buses are not able to drive anymore. They come by people dropping them off. The medical ambulance bring people from some of the care facilities. And you're right, there's an economic enhancement as well. But also, if something did happen with this building, and it was not always a dialysis center, it is built properly in the future. So there's a balance. So we do consider those things.
Thank you. I understand.
So I'm maybe reading this wrong, or I'm just confused about it. But it says, please require the substitution of lap siding for stone veneer. But then the third line down, or the third section, it says, also, the building is close to historic downtown Jamestown, and lap siding is more acceptable than imitation stone in that area. So what are they recommending? They just went in a circle? No?
They're recommending the lap siding.
Oh, okay. And that's what is currently on the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Then my other question is, currently, this section of Highway 108 is used for a parking lot kind of like as a park and ride unofficially? What does this do, and how are we going to address that situation? Are we addressing that situation?
So that's Caltrans Right-Away through there for the future widening of this, which have a project in our capital engineering part of our house right now reviewing. I believe it's Fifth Street back, carrying that two lanes with a turning lane and a signal and the realignment and the new bridge for Jamestown, Rawhide Bridge going back. There's another project that is being considered with changing the entrances along with this, trying to keep those folks from making those tight turns that are right next to that signal. So we're looking at, working with the owner there of the gas station to try to figure out that issue. But that's Caltrans's Right-Away. We'll be talking with them more. This project is the vacant lot that's a little further south, I guess, west. And that is not as heavily used, but a portion of it is. So it may funnel more directly into there. And you're right, there's a lot of vehicles in there. So we'll just have to work with Caltrans and work through that, as well as the owner that owns the gas station. And that's something that Duke and our folks here at our road department engineering will be striving to make sure we take care of. I don't think there's an easy solution, no matter what transposes there. But it is something we just have to work with. We want to encourage people to work together and drive together. However, there's some pretty interesting things going on at that corner. We're just going to have to work through it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for now? No? Okay. So now we will open it up to public comment. We'll start with those who are in favor of the project, and then we will go to those who are opposed to the project, and then we will go to those who speak neutrally. If we have both those who speak in favor and against, we can open it to serve rebuttals. And with that, we'll go with, we'll start with those who are for the project. Just a reminder, you do not have to state your name and who you are, but you're always welcome to.
Hello. My name is Bob Degrass. I'm with Dell Street Architects, and I am the architect for the project, representing Dr. Kullery. We have been working with staff over the past few months to clean up the little things that always occur in projects, and we think we've gotten there. We have read all the conditions, 57 of them. We understand them all. And my goal tonight really is to just answer any questions that you have and then ask for your approval of the project. So if you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer those. And if not, I'll be in the audience in case you have additional questions later on. Yes, sir?
It really isn't pertinent to denial or approval, but I think it would be helpful if I understood a little bit more about the operation and the business side of this a little bit. How big of a facility, how many patients will you be able to see at the same time? What's going in there, really, in terms of the functional portion of it? Are you familiar with all that?
Well, a little bit. We have not been able, we're the project architects for the Shell. We won't be the architects for the tenant improvement. And so the tenant improvement is being worked on. Your comment earlier about number of people that will come and drive themselves there is, in fact, an astute observation. The majority of the people come by public transportation or by other kinds and are dropped off and picked up. So there are- 20 or so stations? 12? 12? My experts in the audience tell me there's 12 stations there. And so the parking lot, as the staff mentioned, is set up for future use. And so it, we've, this is our third or fourth one we've done, and certainly the need in the community is there. And we're looking forward to getting this project completed and helping the community.
Thank you.
I guess it wouldn't really be a requirement or anything like that, but is it, are you, did you guys plan to have a spot for people to get dropped off by bus? Or is there a drop-off zone? Is that something that we should even worry about, Dave?
There is enough parking there so that there will not be a need for a specific drop-off point. We do have, right there in the front of the building, disabled parking and accessible parking there for people that do come. And so we're actually about double the number of accessible parking stalls that the code requires.
Yeah, I was thinking more along the lines of, as Cole was about transit, really, as far as a transit stop, because as you mentioned, public transportation's a likely place that people might arrive here. And I don't know if there's a transit stop there now or not. I'm not sure. That would be Darren Grossi's shop in terms of putting that-
Yeah, I'm trying to look at the width of the aisleways in here. My glasses are broken, so I can't see a bloody thing. So he's opening up a bigger plan here. I'm just trying to confirm that it's widened up.
They're about 25 feet. They're about 25 feet.
All right, so that'll clear a bus, clearly.
Certainly, if they came onsite. I just didn't know if the answer was stopping out on the highway.
It's not on 108 that I'm aware of. And we wouldn't want to drop off on any other place other than right at the site there.
And it looks like there's a whole backside, too, right?
What's that?
This whole backside is a parking lot as well?
It's paved around behind Dollar General, it looks like.
There is, we're planning the project so that there is connectivity between the projects, and so that if you, when that project gets finished off going east or north, I got a little turnaround in there.
That'd be north, I think.
As it goes toward the gas station, we're planning it to be all connected with easements and interconnectivity so that once you get on there, if you wanted to go somewhere, you wouldn't necessarily have to fight the traffic to get back on the highway to make a left turn, to make a right turn, to get back in. So we're fully work with staff in order to get connectivity available.
Okay, thank you.
There is not a public drop-off that I'm aware of that area, and I can talk with Darren, but I don't think there will.
Fairly easy to do, though, so.
So thank you for your time, and I'll be in the audience if additional questions come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Kathy, and I've worked at Satellite for 30 years, down there since 85. The new unit will be 12 stations, and most of our patients take dial ride, so they get dropped off. They don't take the public transportation. And over the years, we've served our patients well, but we really aren't right now. We've had waiting lists up to 17 people. We've had, you know, and they go down the hill. It's two hours down by the time they get down and back, and a three-hour treatment, and, you know, three times a week. So we feel like we really need to expand, and we've really outgrown where we're at. We're at 2,700 square feet. It's really needed in this community. It's really hard for me when I see all these people having to go down the hill, and it's a real hardship.
Where is your facility now? Where are you working right now?
We're on Columbia Way. It's right by the high school, down by the, it used to be the only car wash in town. It used to be the old Church of Christ, is what it used to be. So we have nine stations in there now, but we're just so, you know, 2,700, we're just crammed in there.
So will you shut down that facility?
We're turning away, yes, we will. We're turning away transient people who would come to visit in the area. You know, we get requests for that all the time, so.
Will 12 be enough to meet that need?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Susie Soros Phillips. I'm the territory director for Satellite Healthcare. Been with the company 32 years. This center was primarily built out of the need for the Sonora community. Our first center was built in Modesto, so patients were coming down to Modesto for dialysis. So the founder saw a need. We're a not-for-profit organization, so he decided to build the church, six chairs. We expanded them to nine chairs back in the 90s. And as Kathy mentioned, we've had many patients on the waitlist. Many patients travel. We encourage travel. We encourage patients to live a normal life as possible. So we encourage traveling. So when we can accommodate our patient that may be wanting to go to Yosemite or come from out of state to just enjoy the nature of this community, we have not been able to provide that. So that's been, so we're also going to, back to your question about stations, 12 chairs, we've had nine. We do three shifts a day. So we are also going to be adding home dialysis. So right now, patients have to go to Modesto for peritoneal dialysis or home hemodialysis. So those options will be also provided in Sonora, so patients will have the benefit of both modalities to help them. Any other questions on operations?
Does it look like, thank you very much?
You're welcome.
I live in Jamestown. I go to Sonora Dialysis. I've been going to Oakdale for over a year. And it's, there's a lot of people that go from Murphy's and Strawberry, go to Oakdale, I know personally. And it's hard for these people. I just come from Jamestown. It wasn't that bad for me to go to Oakdale. But still, it was, it's a lot better going up here than it is going down to Oakdale. And up here, it's a nice facility up here. They run it really well. It's small, it's, they're cramped. And this, I'm sure this will help out a lot. There's not very much parking up there. I'm one of the few fortunate ones that can drive myself there and back, so it's a little easier for me. But I believe this is a necessary thing. So that's all I have really to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you very much for having this on the agenda. My name is Frank Jesse. I'm the vice president of Real Estate and Facilities for Satellite Healthcare. And a few questions came up that I want to make sure I help address here real quickly. One that you might be wondering about, with all the history we talk about, we were founded in 1974. And so this is indeed one of our early clinics, really. We've been in this community for a long, long time. And the name Satellite came from the fact that Dr. Copeland, who founded our company, he wanted to create more convenience for patients that didn't have to come all this into the hospital and risk hospital-acquired infections and those kind of issues, and the inconvenience of going to a hospital for their dialysis. Loma Linda University was one of the first to do the idea of creating an outpatient-type treatment. And so he decided we would create a satellite to Stanford University Hospital, and that's where our name came from, Satellite. So I get the question a lot, oh, do you deal with satellites? And anyways, I just thought that you might find that interesting. Also, just to address a few other questions, when you boil down the staff to FTE, we have a couple of half-time for social work and dietitian. There's about 10 FTE typically. And then the patient load comes in, in what I call shifts, of 12 patients. So as you observe very astutely, there's three shifts, so, and there's clean down in between. So you never have, like you'd have in a medical office with the queuing and people waiting to get a parking space to see the doctor and all that kind of thing. So typically, very correctly, as you all pointed out, the parking needs are much less than it would be for a medical clinic. But as was pointed out by the planning staff, they required us to comply with any possible future requirements. And the, obviously, I'm supporting the project, so I want to record that. And I think I've addressed mainly the questions of volume and the parking. And the other thing I did want to emphasize is that, under the ADA codes, we're required to provide, and we're also licensed under the Center for Medicare and Medicaid, and they have their standards as well that we have to comply with. So we have to comply with all the standards. And that drives a requirement for quite a few ADA-compliant parking spaces, including one that has to be a courtesy van space. So it's much, much wider than a typical ADA, plus the aisleway, so that the lift plus the runway for the wheelchair is all accommodated. So your concern is taken care of, and the reason for the awning is we want to shelter the patients as they come in. So thank you very much for your consideration of the project and hopefully an approval. We want to move ahead on this. Thank you.
Well, that answered my question about the word satellite. I was, I had it, but I was, that's too trivial. I'm not going to answer that question.
Hello. My name is Donna Miller. And as both the transportation and the wife of a person who is a patient of the Satellite, believe me, taking a person down to Oakdale, and it's very hard on them because they're not strong to begin with. You take them down there, you have- You take them down there, you have to wait for the three hours, and then you bring them back up, and it's very, very hard on them. Plus you have to deal with the weather. Well, now I'm, uh, there's some of the, the people that bring family members down there, they're not young, and it's a hard trip to take every day, or every other day, um, day in and day out to try to get them down there. We need it up here because it, the people need a place where that's close to where they live, so they can get the help they need. And for the parking, uh, but the one that they're at now, sometimes it's hard to get a parking place, and it's hard on the people trying to get in and out. If you have more parking, well, then it makes it for both the, the people that work for the Satellite that come up, to have a place to park, as well as for family members that bring somebody. But believe me, I appreciate the Satellite Dialysis Center because it's helped me give my husband help, and I work, so it's very hard sometimes to get a ride for him, and this helps having him up here. So I really, really want you guys to get it, okay?
Thank you.
My name's Leah Miller, I am the daughter of her husband. Um, I work for Walmart, and there are a lot of patients that want to come up here but can't because there is such a long waiting list for the one up here. It would be a lot nicer for them to be able to have a local place that they can do with the extra chairs, it'll give them a chance to actually get a place up here to get dialized.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Robin Brooks, and I wanted to come here tonight to speak on behalf of people who are chronically ill. I don't happen to have any kidney issues, but I do have a chronic illness. That being said, all of my medical care that I have to constantly attain is in San Francisco, Davis, and the quality of my life is greatly compromised because there is no medical care up here that I can receive in a timely fashion. Life-saving measures, that's what dialysis is. It's not just a little, I gotta go to the doctor for some antibiotics kind of treatment, it's a life-saving measure. Without it, these patients don't survive. So this is more than just parking lots, this is way more than just what color the building is, this is people's lives that we're talking about, who need this life-saving treatment here. They live here. You know, San Francisco, it's a long way for me to go when I'm having an episode, and I would love to see our county embrace some things that some other counties have, I really would like that, and I am totally and completely in favor of this for those reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more who would like to speak in favor? With that, I will go to those who would like to speak in opposition. Doesn't look like we have much, so we will close that. Oh, that's right. I need to make sure if anyone wants to speak neutrally. All right, now I'll close. Public comment? Uh, we'll bring it back to, yeah, bring it back to the commissioners. Uh, any more questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to know the number of full-time employees per shift. Thank you.
Our current staffing ratios are mandated by the states, it's one nurse, a registered nurse for every twelve patients, and one technician, state-certified, nationally-certified for one every four patients. So we typically schedule a twelve-chair center with one full-time RN who would do three shifts a week, twelve hour days, that's thirty-six FTE, we consider that a FTE, and then we would have three technicians, one RN working each day. So, and then of course, our social worker, dietitian, our admin person, manager, and then our, um, uh, biomed tech who helps us with the machines and water treatment and the physical plant.
Is there a medical director present?
Yes, Dr. Pishore is our medical director, he is, he is right here in the audience, and he's been with us since two thousand nine as a medical director of the Sonora existing facility. Good, thank you very much, sure.
Before you leave, if I can keep you up there for a moment?
Yes.
Do you guys have a, any kind of, of, I'm sure a lot of your patients have, are coming out of Sonora Regional, but do you have any, is there any relationship, legal or otherwise, that, between, connections between yourself and Sonora Regional, or are they just independent?
You know, they're very independent, uh, they've been wanting to partner up with us in wanting to provide dialysis in-house at the regional hospital, but we just haven't had the resources or physician power at the, at the hospital, they don't have a nephrologist, and we haven't had a nephrologist that have committed to the cause, um, at the Regional, so if our patients have any kind of acute needs, we do have a couple vascular surgeons that serve our patients, not all the time, so many of our patients, when there are crises, a clouded access which we use for dialysis, they have to go to Memorial or Modesto primarily for those services.
Well, last question from me, and it really doesn't have much to do with approving this project, but it just helps to understand, when you look at the demographics of our community, there's a good chance that you're gonna be in, in business for a long time.
Absolutely.
And, so, how much room for expansion do you have inside of your facility there? You know, if you, can you squeeze a few more machines in there in this, in this footprint, or will this be pretty much?
You know, I will kinda ask Frank the question, we have an eight thousand square-foot building that we're thinking of, um, I think we would have enough space with the current facility, we have nine chairs, we had six, we added three more, and we are very constricted, we would have loved to just add some chairs there, add some parking spaces, but there is no space in that community because it's a very much a regional, I mean, I'm sorry, residential, and so with this, I think it will allow us expansion, but I'll let Frank elaborate.
Thank you very much for the question. We put a lot of analysis into that, and one thing I want to clarify is, when we talk about shifts, it doesn't mean that it's a different group of staff coming in, 'cause I think that was a little bit your question. It's not like we have three different sets of staff during the day, well, it's the patients that are coming in, in these shifts. But to address the question of the total sizing, uh, we did quite a bit of analysis that, when, when you look at the difference between a nine-chair and a twelve-chair, that twenty-five percent incre-, uh, that, that thirty percent increase is substantial, because what happens is, for each chair, it represents a patient coming in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, uh, because they have to come in three times a week. So you, you take that total number and then multiply it by two. So you've got the, the six, at times the, the two days, so it's twelve, that's quite a lot of capacity that grows. And we, we studied what has happened historically, and we found that that would address a, a long-term need, and if, to go too big, uh, winds up being actually an operational problem. So, you, you have to size it correctly, uh, so that one doesn't, um, create a, a situation that's not, uh, economic relative to the reimbursements we get from CMS.
The, the reason I asked the question, I have, I have a dear friend that, uh, would visit and had to make it back to, uh, Half Moon Bay, or actually was going to Palo Alto, but we had to get her back home to Half Moon Bay because her visits always were cut short, because you can only be here for so long, right? And, and what is intriguing about this a little bit, if you think about all the tourism opportunities we have here, to be able to open up those opportunities to people from the Bay Area, because they know they don't have to make it all the way back to the Bay Area in three days, so they could, you know, get a, a session here, you know, or whatever, and, and.
Yeah, honestly.
It seems to me that there's, there's a business tied to that a little bit, you know, that would.
Honorable Commissioner, the, the focus for the center is this community.
Of course.
And we're not trying to service Modesto, we have clinics in those communities. So our, our real focus is here, sir, as we have for historically, serving this community. And one of the themes we're trying to do with these centers is really upgrade the flavor and feel of it, because the patients are spending a lot of time there, to make it less of a feeling of a clinic, and more of, if I can use the word, a spa. So we're, we're really being careful about now the new centers with, uh, lighting, using LED lighting and making it dimmable, uh, we're bringing in the color scheme, we're trying to really soften it, we're just trying to do a lot of things so that it's less intimidating. But I, I'm getting off the real subject of your question, which was, you know, why the size, and the size is that it was geared to the center, to this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, I have one more question on, it looks like it's a policy fourteen F five, it's about, uh, a trail along the Woods Creek, is that a longer-term plan, are you, are we planning to do longer term, or is it just gonna be a trail along?
So our, our, uh, transportation department, I believe we have a trail system that's being worked on, master plan, so that dedication area and that open space area is something that has been worked on, I, I can't even read it now, but that, my glasses have been broken, so I apologize.
You know, we're really getting tired here, you know, I just.
I can use these, but I can't see a bloody thing with those either, so.
So it's just kind of a, much the long-term master plan?
It's a long-term master plan, and that's just the area that'll accommodate it, so.
There's been a trail planned for many years, it's been worked on, well, along Woods Creek and connecting to other trails, it's a, it's a longer-term plan, it hasn't gone a lot very far, but I recall working on it.
Well, at some point, hopefully, it will get enough connectivity, enough parcels, enough open space, enough land, that we can actually find a grand or some mechanism to actually build a trail system, that I would love to see personally as well.
Sure. Is there any other commissioner questions? No? Anyone want to make a motion then?
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
I move the commission approve the site development permit SDP sixteen dash zero zero five, based on findings A through E, and subject to attached conditions numbering fifty-seven.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Goes unanimously. Well, that's it for today, thank you for coming, and, uh, we'll see you soon.